As I'm getting Zoom set up here, what we're gonna be, what I'm gonna ask you to do is, if you wanna say something, step up the microphone so we can hear you. I am recording this and this will be put out on our website probably an hour after the meeting's over. Rich, you're on mute. There you are. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, little echo. I gotcha.
Rich, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pull the agenda up and you'll be able to see us. We're just not gonna be looking at you. It's all hot out of the fuck. Date of last meeting, March what?
Or we missed April, right? March 16th. Yeah, we missed April.
Okay.
All set?
Yep.
I'd like to call the May 18th Cecil Township Planning Commission meeting to order. In attendance, Dave Calderon, Kristi Budovic, Troy Gump, Jack King, and Joe Seitz from Gateway Engineers. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 16th meeting. If there's any questions or comments on the minutes. I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March meeting.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. First item under old business. Application 2022-0036, the Rank Plan of Lots Number Two subdivision plan. Any representatives from or for the Rank Plan?
I don't think so, and we haven't heard from them. As we discussed earlier, they did file for an extension. I believe that's a 90-day extension, so this will carry over into next month's meeting.
So I'll look for a motion to table the application.
I motion to table application 2022-0036, Rank Plan of Lots Number Two. Until next meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under new business, application 2023-11 Gerber Collision Land Development. I believe we have the applicant on Zoom.
Yeah, it's Rich Van Dorn.
Van Dorn.
And Joe, do you have anything that Dan has, Dan has recommended we table this for several issues, one of which is stormwater management plan. There's several other things on there. Rich, did you hear back from Dan today on anything you submitted?
No, no comments from him. We did submit some stuff to him, no, but I haven't heard anything back.
Okay.
Well, there was, there was, there was a plan that was emailed somewhere around 3:23 this afternoon, and there was insufficient time to make any review, but there's still, you know, outstanding items that need to be addressed, especially the stormwater management, which Dan had indicated.
Rich, do you want to address, basically give an update on where you stand right now?
Yeah, so with the stormwater stuff, we are currently in the process of getting the soil infiltration tests scheduled to be done. And as soon as we have that, that's basically what we're waiting on, to finish that report. Otherwise, as far as we can go without having that information. So once we have that, we'll have that finished for the stormwater stuff. Most of the other items we have already picked up that were on there. The parking stuff, we've already addressed and have updated. The site, like, details, everything that we've already picked up and added stuff on there. The dumpster enclosures, that's already taken care of. Really the only thing kind of left for us to do is the stormwater's the big thing. And then some cost estimate, which, once we have stormwater, we know there, then we can get that cost estimate done as well. And then the only other thing after that would be, looks like photometric. But photometric plan we'll have done next week.
Joe, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'd still recommend it table until next month's meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I appreciate Rich's insights and sharing what he has updated already, but because there wasn't sufficient time to review those plans today, and particularly the stormwater, I will make a motion to table. Application 2023-0011 Gerber Collision Land Development until next month.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, application 2023-12, the Alto Piano Six Revised Lots 611 through 613. Graziani Homes, we have a representative.
Mike Graziani. I'm Mike Graziani. Was the first one lot 804, 5, and 6, or?
This is 611 through 613.
Okay, those two will be joining as one parcel.
What? That's not what's depicted on the plan, Mike, here. It looks like this 611, 613, it looks like you're taking a larger parcel of property and subdividing it into two lots.
You're, you're right. They're just being bought by one customer.
Right.
Okay.
So, okay.
Yeah. No.
And Joe Gateway's reviewed this in?
Yeah, we've reviewed this application and all our comments are addressed in the plans in order for this subdivision to occur.
Any questions, Kristi or Troy?
No.
No, sir.
I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application number 2023-0012 Alto Piano Six Revised Lots 611-613.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is application 13, Alto Piano Eight Revised Lots 804 through 806. And again, Mr. Graziani?
Yeah.
I apologize. Hold on a minute. I think Troy just made a motion to approve this one versus the 12. Did you end with 13 or 12?
611-613.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
All right.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. They'll be subdivided off the bigger parcel. Yeah.
So very similar to the prior application?
Correct. Yeah, everything's been reviewed and everything's in order for this one.
All right. So again, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve application 2023-0013 Alto Piano Eight Revised Lots 804 through 806.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The last one? Okay. All right. We'll, we'll move to item four under new business. Application 2023-15, the Janus Walker Minor Subdivision Plan. We have a representative for this plan? No?
This is again a subdivision creating two lots. All of our comments have been addressed and the plan's in order for consideration.
All right. Great, thank you.
Joe, can I ask about the sewer side? Did they?
Oh, you know what? That's a good question. I do have a note here about that.
Because I think that was pending.
Sub, sub, we questioned about a sewage planning module being submitted.
Yeah.
And I think any approval should be contingent upon the sewage planning module being provided to the township. Thanks. I thank you for your mind.
Any questions from the commission? No? All right. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application 2023-0015 Janus Walker Minor Subdivision, contingent upon submission and approval of a sewage planning module.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. The last item under new business is application 2023-14, the conditional use for the towered property. We have representatives from or for the applicant?
Yes, my name is Bill Moldovan, M-O-L-D-O-V-A-N. I'm here on behalf of D&amp;M Real Estate. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. Also have?
Hi, my name is Ryan Klausnitzer. I'm with NVR, Ryan Holmes, K-L-O-U-S-N-I-T-Z-E-R. I'll be representing the builder.
All right, thank you. And you guys have a brief presentation? Okay, great.
As was stated, we're here tonight to discuss the Profio Road residential development, also referencing it as the towered property. This is a conditional use application. As we mentioned, D&amp;M Real Estate is the developer. NVR will be the builder. From an engineering standpoint, Kim Lee Horn will be taking the lead. Just some brief characteristics about the site. I won't read the tax parcel ID number, but it's 75.76 acres. It's zoned R1 low-density residential. And the maximum density using the cluster development is 151 single-family residential units. Our development strategy as a team is to construct a community with the required density to make the project viable from a development perspective, while maintaining 50% open space across the parcel and having less infrastructure associated with the development using the, the cluster development. The site, it's bounded on this, I'll just use a pointer here so you can see. This is the site here in the center of the, the screen. To the, to the plan north is King Road. To the plan south is Profio Road. We do have some frontage along the, both King Road and Profio Road. The, the existing parcel undulates in and out around existing parcels that, that abut the property. As part of the cluster development ordinance, there's a requirement that the site be analyzed from a, kind of a planning or a landscape architecture perspective to, to identify existing natural resources, develop a plan that, that responds and reacts to those resources, whether they be steep slopes, existing streams, wetlands. I start with step two on this particular slide because step one in the ordinance is to identify the maximum units allowed. And we just stated that at 151. Step two is to identify these existing features. We've identified steep slopes in excess of 25%, existing streams on the site, and also, you know, depicted overhead electric lines that encumber the site, as well as the fact that the majority of this, this site is wooded in its current condition. Step three in the ordinance is to develop a conservation and development plan. This particular graphic starts to carve out some of those existing wooded areas. We followed the contours as much as possible to avoid the steep slopes and created a community that we believe, you know, protects some of these environmental resources. Places, has locations for stormwater management in low spots. It makes sense from a watershed perspective and ends in cul-de-sacs that meet the township's ordinances. I should note that there is a stream on the, it's the southern portion of the site that really creates a bissection of the site that during our concept planning, we determined that it was not feasible or viable to cross that stream. So our development is cut off prior to that location. And then step four is to locate houses and streets. So this is just a depiction of the 105 houses in the general proximity of where we've placed them in our plan. And then step five is to then put together a, a street and a parcel layout. So this is the depiction of that, of that particular plan. After we did this planning process, you know, as described in the ordinance, we came up with a preliminary proposed site plan. 105 lots with the associated grading roadway infrastructure. And part of the, the application requirement was to address sanitary sewer. There is no sanitary sewer on this property. Our intent is to pump the sanitary, the sewage up King Road. Here's King Road, the intersection. It'll go north on King Road, and then we have an inset right here that shows it coming to the intersection of King and Profio, and then heading easter, easterly up Profio Road to the nearest public sewer manhole. We have met with the township, you know, multiple times prior to submitting this application to discuss that approach. So we believe it's a viable approach and, and that, I just wanted to share that with you.
Just a single?
We did also meet with Midway, went through the capacity with them and walked through what we were proposing to do, and they were on board.
Okay, and it's a single pump station for the entire site, or?
We're still trying to sort through how we're gonna handle that.
Okay.
As far as Midway, they did not wanna own and maintain it. So they said it's really up to us on how we wanna handle that as long as, you know, we go through the proper channels to have it engineered.
Okay.
And then we also prepared, just, just to give the, the planning commission a feel for what this is gonna look like, you know, after it's developed. We do have, what we feel is a true cluster development with a spine road, but the offshoots allow for, you know, maintaining existing vegetation between these roadway networks so that there's no cut and fills back to back. So we do intend to, to maintain as much of the existing vegetation as possible.
I think we'll add that if, adjacent to the site is Timber Run Housing Development, which came through as a cluster zoning. And I think that was a, it's a well-done plan, and our intent is to just to base it.
We wanted to talk a bit about traffic and the existing roadways at this point. We did a traffic impact statement and submitted that with our application. Some of the highlights are the, the data prepared and submitted in that report or that statement. It's 1,018 trips a day that will be generated by this development. The PM peak hour, which is the highest hour for trip generation, it's 100 trips. It equates to about one per single-family home. It was 63 trips entering the development, 37 trips exiting. There's no township threshold for traffic impact studies. The township can request one as they see fit. We, we did wanna make a comparison to PennDOT's thresholds to, in lieu of the fact that the township didn't have that threshold. And a traffic impact study is required for 3,000 trips minimum. So it's roughly three times this, the number of trips would trigger that PennDOT study. And based on the traffic impact statement, we believe that we would have no significant impact on the roadways or intersections adjacent to the, to the proposed development. These are some photographs of roadway conditions. This is, we took these photographs at the intersections of our proposed development on both King and Profio Road. On the left-hand side is King Road looking east. In the middle is King Road looking west. And then we also did some measurements of the cartway, of the asphalt cartway, not the, the shoulders. And on King Road, it's a 16-foot roadway. The roadway conditions on Profio Road at our proposed intersection, again, the left is looking east, the middle is looking west. And Profio Road at that location is 18 foot 6 inches. We also, I'll get to the letter that we received from Gateway in response to our application in a moment. One of their requests was that the applicant conduct a, a, a study to, to show the, the, the traffic dispersment from the site. And what we've done here is just, I, I didn't know if you'd have questions today about where we anticipate people going. But we believe that from the site, we have four general directions. And we've just shown that. There's two routes to Route 50, and then really one route into McDonald, and then another route to the, the airport. You could go through McDonald to get to the airport, but we, we just put this together in case we wanna have some discussion. We can use this as a graphic representation. I'm just ending this with, you know, with the illustrative plan. I did wanna mention that we did receive a letter from Gateway, Gateway Engineers dated May 17th yesterday. We've reviewed it. We don't believe that we have any items on this letter that would change the, the design of the plan in any manner. So at this time, I'd just like to provide our, well, hand it over to Ryan and then take some questions.
Yeah, if anybody has any questions about housing, the homes, things like that, I'd be happy to answer them. I think we realize this is a, a long approval process to get through the land development as far as preliminary, final supervisors, things like that. This is our first step of that, and we realize that. So we're welcome, welcome questions and feedback and comments. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
What communication have you had with the neighbors for the homes that are kind of jetting into the property?
Sure. So part of the application requirement is that we had to notify all residents within 300 feet that touched the property. So we went a little beyond that, and we sent certified letters to all those folks. We have the receipts of those. They were, they were handed in as the submission. And, you know, we did state in the letter that, that we would welcome folks to come to the meetings and that they would be notified whenever the, the public hearing would actually be advertised, which.
Sharon, Sharon Mazaco, and I live in 230 Profio Road, which is right where the entrance to the plan could be. And just living in that site where you have the entrance, that's a very blind turn. Just putting that out there. Because I walk that with my dog all the time, and people come flying around that bend. It's on a bit of a hill. I welcome you guys to go drive that road and see where that entrance is gonna be. I'm not sure how safe it'll be for buses and other traffic. The other, the letter that you sent was for conditional use, and it does do the tower property. But in the body of the letter, and I sent you an email, Ryan, I sent you an email. In the body of the letter, it says parcel 140-001-00024-03. So I'm not sure residents were adequately notified with this letter because you have two different parcels described. Well, yeah, that's where they say they're building it.
I can show you, okay, well, I can show you the map and all the.
I understand that, but you said you adequately sent a certified letter, and I emailed you. I don't think you emailed me back, just asking which property is it. I was confused. Not building on yours? Well, according to the letter, they are. And I, I'm not upset, like, I, I know the township's developing. I've lived here my entire life. I just wanna make sure it's done properly with water abatement. I do know there are a couple abandoned oil wells on that property, which I haven't heard you mention about how you're gonna deal with those. And I just wanna make sure you look like you're leaving an adequate tree barrier for the, for the residents. But that entrance, Ryan, that's gonna be a problem.
That's for sure. I think that'll be. That'll be addressed during the engineering when we're doing site distance analysis, things like that. So I appreciate the feedback, though.
And those are both township roads?
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, they're, they're both township roads. And, you know, one, one thing with this development, you know, looking for participation by the developer to make improvements to both Profio and King Road. Profio Road had been on the, a prior master list for road improvements. And once we had heard that this development was forthcoming, we pulled back on doing any improvements, knowing that there would be construction traffic and looking for participation from the developer to assist in those improvements.
You said it's mainly Profio?
Mainly Prof, yes.
So, question, I don't believe the township.
So, question, I don't believe the township has a traffic impact fee?
No, but it could be a condition of approval.
Well, I, yeah, I understand. That's what I was going to say. I was going to say that, you know, in, in instances that that's been the case, you know, we've typically said, hey, we'll step up and pay a, you know, a traffic impact instead of just, you know, doing an improvement in front of
Sure.
a small section of the road, you know, paying in lieu fee to the township and let them use that for something that's, you know, a needed project or something that's kind of right on the, on the books right then.
And I think, I think part of it is bringing the road up to the township standards. I'd emailed the standard details out yesterday afternoon, so.
I do have one question. We, we took measurements of the existing roadway.
Yeah.
And they're, the township standard for the local road is 23-foot wide.
Correct.
In both instances, we're well below that, that width.
Right.
And I know that the township has the requirement to, to request reasonable conditions of the applicant. I, I think what I would ask is what process would we want to go through, you know, between now and the time that we understand what that request or what that condition would be to identify? Is it specifically to township standards? Because I, I say that because there are locations where we've got embankments that come right to shoulders and
Sure.
I, I think that it may be infeasible to get to that township standard width along the entire, let's just say the stretch of roadway that would touch, you know, our border or boundary of our property. What would be the method or who would we, who would we want to talk to, you know, before we understand what those conditions are to identify, you know, the, you know, the specifics of the, the condition?
Well, I think, you know, in most cases, it would be probably myself and the Public Works Director. We have a meeting out there and let's identify where there are pinch points along the road and see what can be done. And I think the, the objective would be to try to get the road to the township standard and see where it can be done and see where it's not possible. So, I mean, be more than glad to facilitate having that meeting out in the field. You know, we'll, I mean, obviously, this is going to go before conditional use in a hearing with the Board of Supervisors, but we can, we can do that and maybe come up with some cost estimates.
Yeah, I'd like to do that before the, the hearing.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, one other question I have here, you know, one thing, a comment here on the letter, location of septic facilities and sanitary sewer lines. You know, I don't think the plan showed any, but you know, you made mention of putting a, a pump to pump this sewage into Midway. My one thought is, you know, these, you know, I'm not, forgive me for not knowing how the watersheds are in Cecil Township and where they drain to, but is it feasible to pump this back into Cecil and into this CTMA system? Has that been reviewed?
I'll have to revisit that, Joe, because we, we really, when we started looking at the property, we went through some pre-thought.
Okay.
We actually, I believe, we met with CTMA.
Okay.
We met with them and basically we're told, hey, you need to talk with Midway.
Okay.
So that's how we ended up at Midway and met with them. So we did really kind of look at which way it did have to go.
Okay, that's good. I mean, I would expect that to be a question that would come up at a Board of Supervisors hearing, so it's, you know, let's be prepared to properly answer that.
And Joe, the, the question or the comment on the, the plan that it wasn't adequately shown, are you looking for something in particular, the location of a pump station on the plans? We have a sanitary main line that we've put on our, our site plan.
Yeah, maybe I didn't, I mean, I didn't, I didn't study the plans.
Okay.
But, but I think, you know, the main thing is show the sanitary sewer for the, the proposed lots that are anticipated and then we can, you know, obviously you're going to lay that out to get everything to the low point. So, you know, get that shown on the plan.
Okay.
I think to add to that, we'll put together a water, a sewer watershed map as well. That way, when we're, if it is asked, we can easily bring it up and say, hey, we looked at that and it's handled.
Right.
So that there's no question.
Yeah, do that. I think there were some other comments here, you know, minimum side yard five feet. Add a note, stated all provided common space will be reserved as permanent open space. And I think would that comes with the ownership? The ownership of the open, open spaces more than likely supposed to be conveyed to the homeowners association?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then you did your analysis of the layout and trails. So I think with a, a conversation we had yesterday was, you know, showing trails on here as a recreation amenity for the development. Maybe I, maybe I missed it here.
And I, I probably should have done a, mentioned it on this slide, but
Okay, it's a good point, good point.
We do have a trail system that we've shown
Okay.
on one of our, you know, our, our concept plans.
Sure.
So we'll get that added to the site plan.
Okay, good. Yeah, get that added. And I guess maybe what you probably need to do also is show a detail of what, how that trail's going to be constructed. Is it going to be just a mowed trail? Is it going to be a trail that's going to have mulch on it? I mean, I don't know. I, I think as developers, developers struggle as to how these trails are going to be constructed from a maintenance standpoint because they will end up being in the HOA's responsibility.
Correct. I think we would look to do some type of a stone road base
Okay.
put down there, something that's a little beefier. I know we've had some other plans where it, it hasn't been such a heavy spec that the developer put it in and we've had issues where we've had to go back and basically redo it
Yeah.
two, three times.
Okay.
So I'd say where we're going to do it right, put the proper base in and not have to, not have to deal with it again.
Okay.
So we would ask, even if the township has a spec that you use on any of your parks or trails, we'd be happy to take a look at that.
We can look into that, Ryan. I mean, I'm not sure we have anything specific, but I'm with you. Once, we want to put something in there that's durable and long-lasting. Traffic, let's look at those, let's look at those site triangles, at those intersections and see where they are. The other thing I had was on lots 68 through 73, there's encroachment of the property into the perimeter buffer. That needs to be removed. That, that may result in a reduction in the number of lots you have. I mean, with, in the experiences that I've had with land developments, I mean, there's no problem with the grading going into that buffer, but you know, to have lots that are going into that perimeter buffer, that's an invitation for that owner to use that property for their own use because they're saying, hey, I'm paying taxes on that. I'm going to do what I want to.
And I just zoomed in
Yeah.
so that, so that the planning commissioners can see it's these
Right.
lots in this location right here. And we believe that we can, this was the only location that we had shown that.
Right.
We'll revise it so that the lots fit in this, in this spot, meet the minimum area and we're going to shift the lots in the cul-de-sac
Sure.
which are larger to
Right.
to accommodate that loss in.
Okay.
But I, it, it, I just wanted to say that I don't believe that it's going to result in a loss of lots.
Okay, that's fine. If you can shift it, that's great.
And it shouldn't result in any type of alignment change either. It's really going to be just shifting some lines around.
I have one statement and one comment or one question. It appears that you're referring to King Road as the primary entrance and exit for the plan. Is that true? Or is it going to be, is the main entrance going to be on Profio or King Road?
I think initially, we, we think that it's going to be off of King. But I mean, that's, that's something we can discuss. I mean, it's really a discussion point. I mean, it's really going to be where the model home and where the bigger entrance monument would be, those type of things.
Because you don't have a lot of frontage on King. Okay? You have more frontage on Profio. That's neither here nor there, but I, it just seems like you kept referring to King Road as, as the access. Second one, the, the point I want to make is this is one of, probably the only proposed plan, and I think it's only the second plan in Cecil Township that actually dumps onto two township roads as opposed to one state road and one, one township road. Having lived there my entire life, I'm not sure both roads are, are ready for that kind of traffic, but I know you've already addressed it, so.
But I think the other thing to point out here is, you know, if, you know, depending on how you phase it, that may be how you establish your main entrance. You know, King Road's going to probably direct people to go back through Timber Run and come down to 980 as a shortcut. I can see that.
I mean, sliding in how many different areas with?
Can I go Timber Run? Open?
Yeah. Oh, and I've never had to look both ways coming out of my driveway, you know? Now I'm wrong if I don't.
I don't blame you.
I know, I don't blame you. And it, I mean, that's progress, I understand that, but I just want you guys to think that through because, you know, nobody abides by 25 miles an hour, but where are they trying to get to? You know, if they're, if they're going to the airport, yeah, go right down to McDonald. I can see down the road and access to the Southern Beltway right there because it's a cul-de-sac which used to be the road to take you all the way down into McDonald. Now with that many cars and everything, jumping on 576 would be ideal right there, you know, so.
And my understanding of the trip distribution study that's being requested is that we will, you know, we'll set up counters and, and we will count traffic on a, on a 24-hour period. So the, the analysis and, and the, the report back to the township is going to be based on what, what traffic today is doing, you know, on those roads.
Familiar with traffic studies, is that through a seven-day period? Is that a 30-day period? How do you, how does that work?
And I am not a traffic engineer. I, I talked to Jeff DePaulis, who was the traffic engineer that put the, the, the statement together. It's a 24-hour, it's a 24-hour count.
Wow. Because I can tell you certain days, you're going to have much more traffic than other days and I understand.
It might be, it might come down to maybe you want to have a, have a seven-day count to get, or, yeah, during the school year to, to capture all of the traffic.
We better get that scheduled then.
I think Joe talked about it, but the, the plan for ownership of open space must be included in the narrative is also another general comment. And he talked about it specifically with the trails, but just that ownership, whether it's the, the HOA bylaws or whatever it is, just please make sure you have that included and that's very clear for potential lot owners.
Yeah, so before we would purchase and build any homes out there, we would have the declarations about, everything would be recorded that would state all that, that the open space, trails, everything are owned, maintained by the HOA.
I know this isn't shown here, but I'm going to ask the question. These 100-plus lots are, this is going to be a, a three-phase or four-phase development?
I think it's going to be three, Joe.
Okay.
I do.
Okay.
Because just projecting out sales, you're going to...
And, and I think another thing that we need to take a, a good, hard look at in the development of this plan is where are you going to put your cluster mailbox?
Absolutely.
Because that seems to be the new hot button with all these developments. I mean, the post office isn't delivering mail to the homes. They're, they're wanting to have the cluster mailbox, so look at your design and your layout and then show something there, you know, pull-off area, where are you going to put the boxes, you know, make sure they're handicap accessible. I mean, we're just, over in Shortiers, we're having the developer rip out the mailboxes that he put on a 13% grade road and they should have been put in a flat spot.
We've been working with, recently with the post office because of what Joe and I lived over in North Sturban. We had a, a project where we had a fantastic pull-off area in the middle of the plan with parking spaces and the post office said, no, you can drive out, put on the state road and not pull into the plan. So since that plan happened, and you know which one I mean.
I know.
We, we reach out to the post office and work with them because we don't want to design and put it in
No.
and get it on the plans and then find out down the road that they're not willing to drive into the plan, so.
You know.
Point taken, thank you.
I mean, for the, for the, for the, for the board here, there's, there's nothing on the township board and it states where they're placed. And I mean, that's something in the future that needs to be considered, but obviously the post office has the final say, you know, and the one thing I learned on one in Shortiers was they want the, the mail delivery person to be able to come in to the development off the less traveled road and have the post, the mailbox on the right-hand side for them to fill up. Sorry, I digress.
No, absolutely.
I think Joe's very kindly saying you should probably figure that out before the board hearing.
Yes.
We can, we can do that.
Yes.
So we need to have trails on the plan, which we will.
Right.
We will have sanitary watershed plan and a mailbox cluster plan.
Right.
Site distance triangles
Yes.
on there, okay?
Perfect. Any other questions or comments? We do have your letter dated May 17th.
Yes, the letter was dated May 17th. There were some items, I, I think I've covered those items in our discussion here this evening regarding this. I mean, it's up to you how you want to proceed since there's two other board members absent tonight, so.
Do we have a motion?
I did talk to the chairman before the meeting and one, the one item he wanted to express was the plan is one of the only ones they'll be dumping onto two township roads.
Mm-hmm.
He brought up some other points that, you know, he can certainly address at another time, but I agree with you. Jason really needs to weigh in on this. He's got some
Insight.
Very good insight. And so I'll just leave it at that.
I mean, if the applicant's willing to table for a month, I think that would be probably get, get these other things addressed and then come back to this board and let them see that stuff that we've discussed.
Yes, the applicant is willing to table herself. I would just ask that the township work with us to schedule some of these
Sure.
meetings
Yes.
as quickly as possible so that we can
We'll do that.
be prepared next month.
Absolutely. We can get together. Okay?
I'll make a motion to table application 2023-0014, conditional use toward property, towered, towered, thank you, until next month. And I will just in the motion also make note that we would love to see the sewage plans, the trail plans, wording for open spaces, mailbox plans, and just some more consideration as far as what the main point of ingress and egress will be for the development for next month. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion, or we have a second?
I second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. No other new business? Jack, any updates on
Ordinances?
ordinances, amendments? Correspondence?
Nothing, nothing I need to call your attention to at this time. I will say that it is food truck season and I have had a food truck ordinance pending for two years now, so hopefully that will come back around. Correspondents in announce? Thank you. As you know, Liz is out on maternity leave. As I made clear to everyone today, I have two weeks and a day left to be interim zoning officer. No one's going to be more happy about her return than I am, as evidenced by how disorganized tonight was. So I do apologize for that and I thank you for your patience with me. This is the first time I've ever set the whole thing up myself, so
Good job.
she's always done it.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate it and I know you're all busy and you were looking for plans and that type of thing, so anything that you need coming out of tonight that you want to look at, just, just let me know. My scanner is a intermittent scanner. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. I was going to have the maps for you and put them up there, but I scanned them in and said it was on but I scanned them in, it said it was on there, but it wasn't on there. So we got to figure out what the, that issue is. Aside from that, you know, I'll certainly let you know via email if there's anything pending or anything that comes up. And I'll keep you updated on how this progresses with this. You know, I, I know that area probably as well as anybody, including our, you know, our, our guest tonight. I brought that up in, in every meeting I've been with them. I've said, don't, I mean, when, when my dad first bought. Yeah. Did you get the DEP letter yet?
Yeah.
Okay. One of the things I want to make you aware of, the Department of Environmental Protection has sent out letters. They started on Swihart Road. They're coming around our way right now, where it's going out through Range Resources. Basically, they're looking for uncapped wells. When my dad first bought the 200 acres that he originally had, it's now down to 47, there were seven wells on that property. There were shallow wells, they were the Waverly oil wells. They didn't know anything about Marcellus shale. They didn't know anything about Utica. So that was basically the world of oil at the time. When an oil well ceases production, it is supposed to be capped. What do they mean by that? There's a pipe usually sticking out of the ground. They cut it off, they, you know, seal it down there so nobody can. Ideally, no more fumes can get out. And I tell the story all the time, but 2008, I'm driving along in my truck with my mother, and I see these flames coming out of the woods between my two fields. And I thought somebody was living in there. So, you know, I lock her in the truck, I get out, I go venture in. There's a pipe sticking out of the ground. The flames are just shooting right out of it. One of those uncapped wells. And what had happened was lightning struck real close and just, just enough to spark it, you know. So took a rock, put it over the, the hole, and the flames went out. So that's when I started on the, you know, calling the DEP and saying, look, we've got some uncapped wells here. Turns out, of the seven, three of them are still uncapped. So the DEP is sending letters canvassing Cecil Township. Basically, just to tell everybody that they are coming in to cap the remaining wells. The problem is, if they look at their maps right now, they don't see them. They had to go back several years, several iterations of the map just to find the well that I knew. And I told them that, that's still uncapped. So that's ultimately what they're doing. So they're sweeping through Cecil Township in sections. And residents are getting this letter. The first paragraph is very confusing. So when they call, I say, look, skip the first paragraph. Read the second paragraph. That'll tell you what this is about. Because they're, they're, the way you read the first paragraph, it's telling them that there's a new well going to be within 1,000 feet of your home. And, you know, some are excited, some aren't, aren't excited. So ultimately, that's one of the things that's going on in the background right now, so.
That is not something that the impact fee that the oil and gas industry pays.
No.
Covers. No, it actually, the impact fee pays the DEP, I believe.
Oh, okay.
I believe that covers the cost of capping those wells.
Okay. The person, excuse me, the person that was in charge of capping those wells was paid for it, but didn't finish the job. So that's ultimately what they want to do, is finish that up. So if you haven't gotten, you'll probably get a letter because it's in your backyard. And all that letter's going to say is, do you know whether there are any uncapped wells? And it's up to the residents to decide if they want to let them in to, you know, on their property or not. And if the property owner says no, they're not going to come on and cap it. So that's, that's the latest that I have on that. Yeah. Exactly. Right. Yeah, who hasn't? Yeah, and they say, that's the thing. They all congregate in my field, the does and everything congregate, but the bucks are all hanging out in the woods. Don't tell anybody that. I am on recording for, so the world can hear it now, so. That's all I have.
All right, very good, thank you. Any other comments from Joe, the commission? Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Sure, thanks for coming. Yeah.
Some new neighbors, huh?
I hope not. I mean, I'm serious, I've never had a. Bam bam. I'm on 25. And it just. Because you're in the winter, when it come down and it's icy, you just slide right through that intersection, you know. So I guess I'll be going up in the field now. Probably, I lost it. I lost it. Wait a minute, I don't think I was over there. I'll stick around just see if they come back for it. See ya, take care. Who's? It was one of the engineers? Well, I'll call Bill. Thanks, Dave.